...for five years. Thank you for your support of our school district. Brian. Brian Barkus. Okay, we'll move on. We have a second one. We invite Natalie Dermer to the microphone.
Good evening. My name is Natalie Dermer and I'm a senior at Ankeny High School. And I've been a part of the Ankeny-Copan program for the past three years. I'm currently hosting Lea Garcia. And she and my other Copan sisters have been perfect matches for me and my family. They honestly do such an amazing matching, like students with our families and everything. From the past three years, I've gained so much knowledge from not only those I posted, but those I've spent time with as well. I've learned so many new Spanish words and tradition, just random little things here and there from them. I've made some lifelong sisters and some best friends in Copan and right here in Ankeny as well. This program has impacted my views on the world and it's changed my life. As next year, I'm going to be minoring in Spanish in college. And it also helped me obtain my seal of illiteracy last year. And although I'm unable to travel to Copan this year, I know that one day I will definitely be traveling there. Thank you for the opportunity you've given me and many other people through the past 30 years, and I hope that it can continue for many, many more.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Brian Barkus did not surface. Okay. All right, we will move on to our consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items as recommended? Motion. Any questions? Hold those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to information only, the Copan exchange. It's a nice lead-in.
I'm really excited to invite Alexis to the stadium.
Yes.
Oh, there he is. He was all bundled up earlier today when I saw him. It's too cold here.
It's balmy. It's downright balmy today.
That's what I told him. It's warm today. But I'm really excited to see Alexis. And again, I had an opportunity to meet earlier this afternoon. Really excited about this partnership and what it's going to look like as you're going to hit over the next 30, 32 years. Alexis?
Well, thank you. I'm going to read it if you don't mind. Yes? Well, members of the board and hello, everyone. My name is Alexis Azale and I'm one of the owners of Copan, the school that you have an exchange program with. And thank you for giving us the time to speak. I know you have a busy agenda, so I'll be very brief.
You're fine.
Okay? Thank you for giving us the opportunity to continue with this exchange program. Thank you for your warm welcome and thank you for your cold weather. For our kids, it's a blessing to play with snow. They were showing me some videos of how they went skiing yesterday and they're so happy. They're so happy. It is a blessing. And it's a blessing to come here, experience the beauty of your city, your amazing schools, and to have loving families welcome us into their homes. Thank you for trusting us throughout all these years. Now, 32 years ago, Ben Norman, who's a former superintendent, and my father, who's turning 80 this year, they sat down and gave the first steps towards this adventure. And throughout this 32 years, I was doing numbers earlier, and close to 1,000 students have had the opportunity to live this real cultural experience, close to 1,000. And I'm here today to show our gratitude and to keep building ties between our schools and our families. I am here today to thank all the people that have seen the value of this exchange and have gone out of their way to make sure this adventure continues alive and well. I am also here today to invite you to research Copan and a website and find out what your sister school in Mexico it's all about. It's a really special school. And most important of all, we are here to ask for your help to get more people involved and motivated with our program. We have been doing this for 32 years. I've been here for the last maybe 20 years. And it's just amazing if we could keep this program going for the next 32 years. We love Ankeny. We love your families. We love your schools and we would love to keep building our relationship for years to come. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Alexis, I want to just, yes, the governor may have questions for you.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I do, like going back to the Ben Norman 32 years ago. So how did your father and Dr. Norman connect?
Well, we had this principal in school. Her dream was to bring some kids to the U.S. on an exchange program. And she got ahold of you because Ankeny and the city where our school is at, they became sister cities 32 years ago. So then, since they were sister cities, we thought that we might also have a relationship between two schools and call it that we're sister schools. So that principal talked to my dad and my dad got to talk to your superintendent. And that's how everything came up.
Yeah.
That's how they planned this 32 years ago. And I've been involved for 20 years now. And we've been just having great relationships. Every time I come here, I feel like I'm with family. It's amazing, really. And our students, see, every time they come up here and they speak, they start crying. They get so emotional because they love this so much. So we really want to keep this going for a long time.
Well, I invite them to take off the snow pants.
Yeah, for us, this is different. It's just beautiful. We just love it. We love snow. We love everything.
Yes.
Last week, they told me it was not that nice.
Yeah.
But since I got here yesterday night, it's been much better for me.
Today's a much better day.
Yes.
Other questions?
Any other questions? Well, Dr. Prit, thank you.
Thank you.
Board, thank you for everything.
Thank you. This is by far one of my favorite boards I've been able to show me these few weeks. So, and thank you to all of our families who support this exchange and make this possible as well. We appreciate you guys coming to see us. And you don't have to stick around if you don't want to. Is there anybody else out there that wants to share their experience from Copan? You want to?
Hi, Manal. Good evening. And I'm one of the exchange Copan student. Did you hear me say that we not only learn about the history and customs of others, but we also immerse ourselves in the living stories of those who share the world with us? And I never imagined that those words would be true and that that wisdom would make sense in that experience. You can't even imagine that it's just, that it's not just making an experience as I thought it was at the beginning. It's making a new family, having new friends, not only from Ankeny, but with the people that we travel. I want to express my deep gratitude to all of those who have contributed to making this exchange an unforgettable experience. Alexis, the school board, teachers from Copan and Ankeny, Rebecca and Valerie. We are so very grateful for your opportunity to learn and grow together. And we will carry these precious memories with us as an indelible bond that connects our worlds. Thank you for sharing this wonderful cultural journey with us, and we certainly hope that this experience lasts forever. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hello, I am Ale Cabeo and I am a senior at Ankeny High School. And this is my second year as a host. My family is originally from Mexico and my mom spent the first 12 years of her life there until she moved here. My whole family speaks Spanish except me, but I understand a good amount. I'm probably the least familiar with our culture because I'm the first ever second-generation immigrant born in our family. This exchange has been an amazing way to learn more about my culture because Gui actually lives in Mexico. I've been able to form such amazing relationships as well. For example, I hosted a girl named Fabi Noriega from Copan last year, and it was amazing. And two months afterwards, I was able to go back to Mexico to visit her and I have like other family that I have there. I'm so grateful to be able to host Gui. This is her third year here and it's been really fun. She's came to my band rehearsals, including pep band, and she's loved getting to know the people in band. We also taught her how to play the trombone and it was really funny. We also went to downtown Des Moines and she loved jumping in the snow and throwing snowballs at all of us. Moments like this will stick with me forever and I'm truly happy to have been able to experience this once again. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else? Well, again, we appreciate you coming to spend time with us and please make the most of the remainder of your time here. If you guys can make the warm weather stick around, that would be great. We appreciate that.
Thanks.
All right, moving on to item B. Fiscal year 24-25 budget assumptions with staffing.
Absolutely. I'm a ask guy. Ms. Jameson sees, do I know a few of our budget assumptions and staff recommendations?
Good evening. That's a tough act to follow.
Especially when you have a bunch of double dads.
Right, right. Yeah. But it's one of my favorite presentations every year, too, to hear the kids from Copan come and share their experiences. So hopefully, Samantha, I have my laptop plugged in.
Sorry.
Hi, Kevin here.
I have a brief slideshow that I think will help us walk through the narrative that is in the packet. So without further ado, we'll go ahead and jump in. The first assumption was about stabilization of the tax rate. The total tax rate currently is at $17 and it was reduced by about five cents from the previous year. So we're currently analyzing valuations. We are waiting on SSA. We know enrollment, so that tax rate is starting to come together for fiscal '25. So it's not known yet, but I wanted to share with you that history that's on the screen. The gold line represents the rate that it was before. It was in 2010 and it has reduced by $5.35 since fiscal 2011. We've been able to reduce the rate every year since then. The second assumption is related to our tax base. Our overall tax base did increase for fiscal '25. This is a history of the last several years. The gold represents the tax increment valuation, tax increment financing. It did decrease last year, which led to our, but our overall valuation increased by 11%, which is really helpful for some of our funds, which we'll talk about a little bit later, for physical plant and equipment and debt service. Overall, our 30-year average has been 7.85%. Our next assumption was in regards to our enrollment. We do know that anticipated enrollment is going to continue to stabilize. We were down 34 students for our certified enrollment going into fiscal '25. And that number is projected to level off as we go out into the next five years. So the bar chart is showing you the history of our enrollment and then the actual new money that's generated with that SSA percentage. So you can see that we're assuming a 2% SSA right now. I believe the governor recommends two and a half, but that is yet to be seen what that rate will be. And so we're assuming a 2%. And with our decline in enrollment, our new money is anticipated to be a lesser percentage of that. Overall, our 10-year average in SSA, I think we've talked about that before, has been 2.19% over the last 10 years. That's kind of why we're using that 2%. In terms of the cash reserve levy, we will need to determine if an additional cash reserve levy is needed for solvency. Our solvency is currently at the upper end of that target. We are anticipating, depending on where committed balance and some of the restricted balances that we have for categorical funds, lands, we're projecting about a 7% solvency at the end of this year. So we'll have to see where we end up, but I am anticipating at least needing enough in cash reserve for the requests that have been made to the school budget review committee for that additional MSA. Right now, that's about $7.1 million. And you can see our trend over the last several years. We have levied between $10 and $11 million. There was one year where we were up to $12.6. Our current limit on cash reserve is 17 and a half, so we could, if we needed to, go up to that limit. However, with our solvency and our days net cash over our target, I am not anticipating needing to levy much additional over what our SVRC requests are.
Can you refresh my memory on the solvency? What's the range, the healthy range?
The healthy range is 5 to 10%. That's in board policy and IASB actually recommends 7 to 17%.
Okay.
So we're kind of right in that mid-range right now at 9.24. In terms of IPRs, the IPRs contribution for fiscal '23 that the district paid was $8.7 million. That is about 5% of our general fund budget. And the contribution rates for fiscal '25 remain unchanged. So the district portion of that is 9.44%. In terms of total health insurance premiums, we anticipate an estimate of $17.7 million being paid out for fiscal '24. That was an 8.27% increase over the prior year. We do have an RFP out for medical insurance for next year, which we are receiving those bids currently. And as the slide shows here, the current percentage of total of our budget for health insurance is 10.6, and that has ranged from 10 to 11% during that time period. As far as increases for the various amounts of salaries, benefits, services, supplies and equipment, right now, the assumption for salaries and benefits is unknown. As you know, we're currently in salary negotiations with our two unions. But the increase for transportation services is currently at 3%. And then you'll see some of the other professional services recommending a zero and supplies and equipment at a 10% decrease. The reason for the decrease is that we are looking at doing some budget alignment in some of our department and building budgets, as well as some cost shift out of the general fund into other funds for some large supply expenses. In terms of staffing, due to the relatively flat and declining enrollment, the only staffing, for the most part, being recommended currently is to staff Abbey Grove. As you can see, we have a total of 20.6 new FTE, some of which are going to be funded out of categorical funds or enterprise funds for our nutrition and our before and after school program. So of those 20.6, really only 12 are coming out of that new authority, and that's totaling about $911,000. We do have some other positions that are being restructured, so we're adding additional staffing, but in other ways, we're going to decrease. So we're doing some sharing between buildings, so we're going to be able to close some positions, but we need to increase these three positions for our specials that are going to be shared between Northwest and East Elementary.
Jennifer, can I ask a question about this?
Sure.
I just want to make sure I understand this because there's no gen ed teachers in here. Is that because that's like a budget neutral, just be transferring people into those positions and reducing sections elsewhere?
Yes.
And Abbey Grove?
Yeah, that's exactly why you don't see any gen ed teachers because we'll be coming over from other buildings. And I did want to mention, as we've talked about other times here, part of the committed balance at the end of June 30th, there is a $1.2 million committed for Abbey Grove. And while that doesn't help in terms of spending authority, it will help us as far as solvency. So we won't need to levy cash for that. We already have it set aside.
Can I ask one additional question on this slide? This is holistic of all new positions. I think last year, Dr. Prit, we had broken out building staff and then academic services within your team separately. So this is the holistic picture.
Yes, last year, we had phase one, phase two. This is phase one. It's yet to be determined if I'll be bringing forth phase two, depends upon... I and my team have been going through, looking at budget for fiscal year '25. In addition to the RFP that we have for insurance, that's going to impact our general fund in addition to the negotiations that we're going through. So at this point, I will not be bringing forth phase two. If I do decide to do that, then I'll notify the board in my weekly update prior to coming to the board in a board meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions about this slide?
Jennifer, before you go on, I just want to extend my answer to the director bar call. We may have some opportunities within our departments or in schools to restructure positions based off of staff members resigning or getting promoted. And so we may be doing some restructuring, similar to what we did a few meetings ago with other departments.
In terms of salary settlements, this is just a recap of the various increases to different groups of employees from this current, from last year to this current fiscal year. Those amounted to around $4.7 million. We had increases ranging from 2.25% to 5.51% between those various groups, as was in the narrative. And then the last assumption is that we'll provide effective fiscal management of district funds. This is a recap of where we ended up for fiscal '23 from the other governmental funds that make up the budget. In terms of the physical plant and equipment levy, as I mentioned before, our additional valuation and our levy rate of $1.67 is going to yield an additional $1 million in revenue in the physical plant and equipment levy, which is a positive. And then for the SAVE fund, that is again that statewide one cent sales tax. We are anticipating for fiscal '24 a $15.6 million in revenue compared to $17 million from last year. And that change was largely due to a different way of reporting. We were receiving a reconciliation payment. So in fiscal '23, that was the last year, the reconciliation payment from the prior year. So now we're receiving all 100% of the funds in the same fiscal year that they are earned. And as far as the debt service fund, we will have, this is a number that kind of surprised me. We will only have $28.9 million of general obligation debt remaining at the end of this current fiscal year. In '25, it's projected, we are going to need about $7 million to service the debt per our schedules. So we'll continue to analyze that in terms of the rate that we currently have, a $2.59 rate. And then the last fund that we talked about is the management fund. That current rate is 51 cents. I'm anticipating that rate increasing just because of some of the historical increases that we've been receiving for our property and liability insurance and because our property values are increasing with the addition of Abbey Grove. So I'm guessing at least 15 to 20% in increase in that, in that one line item. That is my last slide. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have as far as budget going into fiscal '25.
One sec, you're on the hook. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to ILC, transitional kindergarten update.
And so for the past year, it started last year where we were thinking of additional ways of attracting families to Ankeny. And transitional kindergarten came up in our conversation. So at the time, it was Dr. Lindsay coming in with Dr. Dittmar coming in. We looked at and considered what would need to happen in order for us to lift up a transitional kindergarten. And if we were to lift up one, would there be any interest in that transitional kindergarten? And what is, what's going on throughout the state around transitional kindergarten and what those programs look like? And so Dr. Dittmar tasked Ms. Owens with bringing a team together. And she'll explain who she brought together with looking at transitional kindergarten, our equipment in the metro and in the state, and what defines those words. So I'll pass it on to Ms. Owens.
Thank you. All right, so yes, when we are thinking about transitional kindergarten, just to understand what, what are we talking about? And so today, the purpose is to better understand transitional kindergarten programming and the opportunity that it can provide our Ankeny families. We will talk about what it is, the focus group, what their actions were and the timeline around that. And then what does transitional kindergarten look for Ankeny schools? So Nancy Lehman will talk a little bit about the student experience and what we could expect if we were to look ahead for transitional programming. And then what would those possible next steps be? So when thinking about what is transitional kindergarten, we want to think about, is something that is designed for students who are kindergarten eligible and, but yet might not be quite ready to take that leap into kindergarten? So it's the bridge between preschool and kindergarten. And it gives children an additional year to develop some of the social and academic skills necessary in order to set them up for success for their kindergarten year. And again, as I said, it is for kindergarten eligible students. So you would have to have a birthday of that September 15th date or after. When thinking about our focus group, we started, I just asked, I put an article in the scoop and said, who would be interested in helping to research this question, how transitional kindergarten would impact our Ankeny families? And there were about 20 that were excited to join that focus group. So we met in May and then we met through December of this year. In that focus group, we had our preschool teachers, kindergarten teachers. We even had a couple of first and second grade teachers, our preschool principal Sheila Schmidt, Kristen Barber, the Northeast principal, who is also a former preschool principal. And we had our AEA regional director, Erin Rush, that joined us. And then Nancy Lehman also joined us. So it was a good group that represented a variety of different interests and areas to be able to support that research. When we think about what we did during our time together, we looked at the research. We partnered with EAB, who is a research firm that dug into TK research throughout the country. California was an area that we specifically dug into that had a statewide implementation of transitional kindergarten, along with other states. We also then looked at onsite visits. We went to Johnston, who currently has been serving in a TK programming setting in the half-day model. And then we also went to Bondurant, who serves TK students full-day model. We then dug into just transitional kindergarten across the state. We reached out to other districts. We looked on the website. What were other districts doing? And then talking to people as far as how was that going? And then lastly, we talked to our preschool teachers and our kindergarten teachers. Where does this fit into our current practices within Ankeny and the need that we're hearing our community say that we have, but then also that we're hearing some of our kindergarten teachers saying, ah, some of our students might just need a little bit more time before they take that leap into kindergarten? So with that, can you go on next?
Lovekin, so in looking at the multiple models that we researched, we ended up with our recommendation would be that we have a full-day, full-day TK option. We really want it to mirror the elementary calendar, the elementary school day experience. We want kids to attend on a regular basis and have that full-day experience. So again, five days a week, about a 20 to one ratio, 20 students to one teacher, the length of day being somewhat to elementary. And then making sure that our students have a rich and robust experience, not only the academic piece, but also their access to their specials, their digital learning, their music, their PE. And just give them that second or that first go at kindergarten because they'll have another round of that coming. have another, another round of that coming up. Also very important considerations, and it was, it was interesting to learn what different districts do. Our team ended up walking away feeling like the services that should be available to our students should be rich and robust. So they should have access to any supplemental support, interventions, or extensions that all students K through ever have. That we would make sure that we have these all services available for students there. Again, special education services would again continually be available and that counselor and social work support would be accessible for our TK students again. So everything that they have in elementary accessible to our TK students as well. And lastly, availability of some of the other services that we have, before and after-school program, always depending upon availability and space and locations. Transportation, again, when we know if and when they would, where they would be located, same transportation rules applying. If you live more than two miles away from that attendance center, that you would be eligible for, for transportation. Again, if a student had an IEP where specialized transportation was required, that as well.
One of the things that we think is important for our families to understand is that first bullet. And so we would receive full funding for our TK students, but it is also considered a retention year. So it would be considered a first of two years of kindergarten and being very transparent with our families about that. With that, we also will focus on kindergarten standards. Yet, you might ask, so what's going to be the difference? We hear that we're going to have a lot of the similarities between kindergarten and transitional kindergarten. The team recognized the additional opportunities to have increased collaboration, structured play, opportunities to learn school and how school is done while still focusing on the kindergarten standards and prioritizing with our kindergarten and preschool teens. Which standards do we really want to dig into at that TK level to set our students up for success when they get into kindergarten and feeling as if leaders, okay, I know this, I can help support and continue to grow in that area? So yes, it would be considered a second year, but also with a focus on some prioritized kindergarten standards that they would then again see in the kindergarten year. So what would be next for this? Registration, as we know, opens up here in early February, on February 2nd. And so registration would look very similar as it would if we were registering for kindergarten, preschool, parents would go into their infinite campus portal and they would register for that. The difference is, we would know that we would have limited space for this programming compared to what we would have for a kindergarten classroom. So we would make sure to timestamp and look at the order in which families were registering to help us recognize who would be eligible for transitional kindergarten. The team did feel strongly that it would be primarily a parent decision and that schools would not be determining if your student would go to transitional kindergarten or not. Now, if parents have questions and they want to, they wonder or to be more informed about making their decision, we will of course partner with our families to be able to do that. When deciding on that TK piece, we would also create a waitlist. So if you didn't have, if we ran out of seats, we would have a waitlist that we could come back to our families and say, now we have a space available. Would you like to have TK over the kindergarten space that would be available? And then lastly, we asked our community. We asked them, are you interested in this? We have heard from a variety of groups that they are interested. We did put out a survey and partnering with our communications department. And the response very early on was that we do have families that are interested and are wondering what our next step will be with that. So looking ahead, when thinking about moving ahead with this, we want to educate our parents to make sure they have informed decisions and thinking about, okay, would this be primarily for students that probably are on the younger age and closer to that kindergarten deadline? And helping them understand what would make an informed decision in deciding between kindergarten or transitional kindergarten? And then lastly, determining what the space would be between, this gets as far as the location. And we want to make sure that we would have space that has a kindergarten classroom with the bathroom and restroom available. So that would be determined and presented to families too. But more than likely, it would be centered in one area of Ankeny instead of in every building. And with that, does anyone have any questions?
What do you think the projected enrollment would be with TK kids? Sorry, I've got like a loaded question.
We sent out a survey two, three weeks ago. Would you share how many parents indicated interest?
Well, within the first two days, I believe we had roughly around 200 families that expressed interest. And then the final number was 200?
68.
268.
Yeah, because I know just with the big base TK programs in the two churches that I know of, I think they support the service, maybe 40 students total. My son's classroom is 21. And it's pretty cut and dry, like if you're not on by 9:00 AM on registration, you're probably not going to get in. So I'm just curious on how many families went to get, you know, if there was opportunity.
Sure.
So the, the number of classrooms that we would be able to lift up will run, I think a lot of different factors. The registration that starts in February, space that we have in the district, but most importantly, what the budget came with the stand. And so because we currently don't have the funding for, because the students haven't been counted yet, we haven't received, we haven't received the funding for these children that enroll. And so we wouldn't receive the funding until the fall of '25. And so it's going to be a mixture of what the budget came with the stand. And with regards to us reassigning teachers to Abbey Grove, how many of those teachers, any extra teachers that we may have that we may be able to assign?
Maybe something where like we start small and then just progressively?
Potentially, yes.
You mentioned that they would be counted as a retention year. Is that a standard practice across all? I'm just thinking if they transfer to another district, what does that look like? You know?
Yes, it's stated in the DE guidance. And as you look at other TK programs across the state, very frequently, it's explicit. So families are aware of that.
Great. And then my other question was with the pre-assessment, you've got the recorded Q and A webinar. So somebody hypothetically, if they're on the edge, they should register for a pre-TK instead of a K because really it's going to be hard to go back down versus go up with registration, correct? Like?
Correct. There will be space for kindergarten. We know that TK would be limited space. So if you're considering that to register for TK, and then if you decide to change your mind, you would register for kindergarten. And we've had some families reach out about that. Our registrar has passed on some emails and communications. So there's been great questions up there.
You'll be very shocked what my questions are. How was this survey sent out?
Through a blackboard message, no, yeah, through a blackboard message. And then it was a form that's also been on the website. And then there's been through the school newsletters, so electronically.
Only electronically?
Only electronically.
What languages did it go on in?
Sorry. It, the systems translate as you receive it. So up to 100 Google Translate languages.
And then was there efforts to get to families who technology is a hurdle, is barrier? Was there any extra efforts to ensure that it got up to those families?
A couple of things that we're working on doing. So our kindergarten registration night will be coming up. So parents that are coming in and wavering on kindergarten will have a face-to-face in-person, will have slides there to be able to educate them on what's the difference between TK and not? That's our primary face-to-face one that we've had outside of just questions coming in. So yes, that would be.
Can I ask you, can I ask you a quick, a quick question on that one? Are you, is your question about the survey or people knowing if we offer it, that it's available?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I was just asking.
But also say, thinking about our preschool teachers too. We've been making sure that our preschool families are aware of it through conversations with our preschool teachers. So that has been a piece too. And then just through our elementaries.
How about private preschools across the city?
No.
The thinking was because it would be offered opposite of their own programming, that there's not a lot of interest in them advertising on our behalf in that way.
There might be if they don't offer the services and want the best for their kids. Is it pretty standard this, for this to be a parent-only decision?
It was mixed. So we had about half and half. So there were some districts that you'll go to and they had a table, consider if your child could do this or this. Our group was split a bit on that because it felt very much like a checkbox and we know the decision is more than that. We'd rather our families have conversations, whether with their teacher, with their principal, with someone to be able to say, okay, let's talk more about this versus just looking at a checklist and checking a box and possibly making a decision that they didn't feel fully informed about.
And then based on the slide, selection based on data registration, it's going to be first come, first served?
Yes. Yeah.
Was this TK program in our proposed budget numbers that we just saw?
No.
Okay. And so if it's not, how would we fund this or what would we have to give up in order to offer this or would that look like?
Because of our ability to, we were required to reduce sessions in our current elementary schools to be able to staff Abbey Grove. And so based off of that reduction in sections, we have additional teachers that would be available to take on that responsibility.
What happens with those teachers if we don't offer TK?
The, right now, we know of, remind me again, Joey, we have one teacher that we'd be able to use. I didn't want to use numbers just yet because I didn't want to indicate that we only are doing one class. But right now, we know we have at least one staff, one position available to use for TK.
Okay.
Question, with the space and capacity, are you thinking there's a central location or is there a north feeder, south feeder?
Right now, we've identified two possible locations on the south side and two possible locations on the north side that have the space and the restrooms. And to have partnerships, so if we did expand over time, that we could not have a singleton and be able to grow that together.
I don't have a question, I have a comment. I wish this was something we had many, many years ago because I had, one of my children were like not ready at all. He was a preemie and, you know, month early and blah, blah, blah. I was like, he was not ready for kindergarten. So this would have been fabulous. But because of the conversations we had with his preschool teacher, we were able to make that decision to keep him there and hold him back. So I, you know, I'm excited to see this grow. I hope that we can make this work. I think it is a needed service.
So this is going to be an unpopular opinion in this room. I don't love TK. I think it sends the message that we don't think kids can be successful before we've ever had them in our buildings. And that just rubs me the wrong way. With that being said, I work in a district where we have early kindergarten and have for a number of years. So our process begins by parent request. And then we do have a process in place for it to try and get those in. What I have seen in my, you know, small end size, let's say maybe 200 or 250 in the times I've been to Ballard, is it is 98% of the time run by when a child's birth date is. And I would say 85% of the time, and looking at further data such as ADs, we can, we can take into consideration ADs and gold. And then we have parents still on ASQ. Honestly, 85 to 90% of the time, those kids are very kindergarten-ready. They just don't want to send their kids, whether that's athletic eligibility, I don't want to send my kid to college, you know, a month after they turn 18. There's a variety of reasons that, that, that happens. And so I worry a little when we say it's all parent-led because I think the parents who really have their business together, you know, it's the same people who can sign up first one lessons right there at Oakdale. I am not one of those moms that can do that. Are going to take up those spaces when really what we find the kids who really, really need our services are the kids who don't go to preschool because there's not background care. They can't get their kids to and from preschool. English language learners that don't even understand universal preschool, they're just moving here. So that concerns me that we, it's just, I think that advantages certain families over perhaps the ones who, who need it. I, yeah. I, I under, I'm very conflicted about this. I understand.
I just want to say I made a list of my concerns and they were all exactly what you just said.
And the focus group had that exact same debate. And, and I, I agree. I'm not sure what the right answer is. I also, one of the pieces we discussed as a focus group is leaning on criteria that possibly might predetermine, to your point, that a child isn't ready for kindergarten. And I'm not sure, could we get to that point? Yes, I believe so. But I am not sure if that would be something that we'd be fully ready to do for the first year.
It's, I mean, it's hard.
Yes, and both, I, what both of you brought up is exactly the things that the focus group grappled with.
And my other question would be, I think sometimes, I'm in a much smaller organization. So maybe this would not happen in an organization aside. I see those kids get labeled. They were an EK kid in second and third and fourth grade. Again, we're a much smaller system. But they were an EK and that's why, you know, I see a lot of tying that to, to those kids. That, that's a concern that I have. Again, we're a really big system. So maybe if I go to EK at Northeast for their room, I'm actually a, you know, Westwood kid that's not even going to follow them, but.
We did discuss educating our teachers around what does this program look like and mean, but also all of the research that we looked at, informing them to, that oftentimes by the time they get to third grade, there is a very similar performance level. So it's, it's, it's not an EK kid forever, nor should it be from the very beginning. But having some teaching and learning around that too.
And then was there any conversation about, you know, kids when they're done with TK could go to first grade technically? Is there any?
Correct. We did have a conversation, yes. So they should follow the exact same process that we would follow for any other grade if that's a question that we had. So not to be a barrier or not to limit that. So yes, that was another exact thing that came up that we would follow.
And I, I think there's a real need for kids who come out of preschool and they're not ready and there's not a space for them. I, I definitely get that. I'm not certain that I think it's the public school's responsibility. That's just where I sit. But I certainly get that.
Would the decision to jump to first grade also be parent-driven or at that point would?
That is a collaborative school and parent decision. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Okay, IND, Facilities and Finance Committee minutes. And any questions there? Sorry, I didn't think we were voting on anything. It's been a minute since I've been in. Any questions about that? Policy minutes for December? Revenue expenditure report? Or the donation receipts? Okay, Item H, Board Member Committee Participation Reports.
We had five minutes.
Yes, we did.
Faculty of Friday.
Yes.
We really just talked a lot about the, the, a lot about that and some construction change orders. Yeah, it was a whole, yeah, it was pretty simple. Dr. Pruitt, Dr. Dittmar, Dr. Hock, and I went to our first Edelson Chamber lunch, Rotary Lunch on Tuesday. And we're. And we're, is inducted the right word? I don't, is that the word? Inducted into the Rotary? That took place at the Ankeny at a golf and country club. So that was a really cool experience. Dr. Pruitt blamed me for the snow day that was happening that day. So, but we look forward to continuing that partnership. They have lots of opportunities for involvement in supporting the community. So, or involving the works that they do. So we'll keep you posted as opportunities arise. Anyone else? Okay. Acknowledgements and recognitions?
We don't have anything in, in our notes, but I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Tim and our facilities team. We were hit really, really hard over the, over the past two weeks with snow and bitter cold. And our custodians and the facilities team were out there in negative 32-degree weather, below freezing weather, plowing our parking lots, shoveling our sidewalks, making sure that our buildings were warm and our pipes weren't freezing. And so I just really appreciate, want to express my appreciation to that entire team that were outside while all of us were warm and cozy in our homes and with them working to get the schools ready to receive staff and our students. So thank you.
Thank you.
Can I add to that? I just want you to know that going to work this last week, I have seen the crosswalk guy, people clearing sidewalks that aren't theirs so that's safe for our students. Not our schools or sidewalks, but like across the street and stuff. So I wanted to say thank you for that.
Item J, contracts and agreements at the building level under $10,000. Do you have any questions about those couple of contracts that I listed there? All right, with that, we'll move on to old business, contracts and agreements. I don't have anything here.
Nope.
Like no blue stuff.
Yes, I'm spinning.
I don't have internet, so maybe you do and it's just not showing.
They were there last night.
Under A?
Yeah, usually I've got.
I have two.
I mean, I usually get blue language that tells me what to say. That is not there. That's what I'm saying.
I'm spinning.
We have no.
Yes, there's no, I don't know.
Try to click on something. Does it work?
Melissa, you might have to dump it in like colors.
Can I get a motion to approve the contracts and agreements?
Motion.
As recommended.
Second.
Any questions on the contracts? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Yes. So I'm, I'm doubting, actually I'm doubting construction change orders. I still have any blue. So Melissa, you just told me to wait if I'm not saying this correctly. Because I don't have a paper copy, right? Can I get a motion to approve? Oh, do you have it? Uh, approve and accept the construction change orders as recommended?
Motion.
Second. Any questions on the construction change orders? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion passes. Item C, can I get a motion to approve and accept the policy? Oh, no. Okay, let's do it this again. Okay, mine has the approval of it for.
Oh, this is the right.
Yeah, okay. Can I approve the bid vendor for the Northview re-roofing phase four project?
Yes.
Yeah. Can I get, is it just, can I get a motion to approve the bid and vendor for the Northview re-roofing phase four project?
Motion. Second.
And it's reading it wrong, the minerals. It's been a little like more on the spot challenging. Any questions on that?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I have C, policies, second and final, two readings. Can I get a motion to approve and accept the policy, second and final reading? Policies are for immediate implementation upon second and final reading.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to new business. Can I get a motion to approve the concession stand assistant manager job description?
Motion. Second.
Any questions on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion passes. Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the notice of intent to award a computer science professional development incentive fund grant in the amount of $65,550?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion passes. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.